The subdivision of property in the unincorporated areas of Jefferson County. And legal definition of a subdivision is any division of land into two or more lots for the purposes of development or sale. I always like to say it doesn't mean there's eighty lots going in when we do a subdivision case, it could just be two lots. And adjacent property owners of each property that we're talking about today would have been notified by mail and legal advertisements were published in a newspaper of general circulation, although I'm not sure what that is these days, and signs were posted on the affected properties containing five or more lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission is also responsible for administering the comprehensive plan and future land use amendments for Jefferson County. And we evaluate rezoning cases for their consistency with the planning policies and the zoning regulations as they pertain to the unincorporated areas of Jefferson County. And we provide recommendations to the Jefferson County Commission on zoning cases, and the commission itself makes the final decisions on the rezoning cases. And for rezoning cases, property owners within 500 feet of each case have been notified by mail and legal advertisements were published in newspapers and signs posted on the affected properties. And also as part of our responsibility, we conduct our proceedings in accordance with fair housing, federal fair housing laws. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, sex, religion, familial status, national origin, disability, financial status, or housing arrangement. And we are committed to ensuring that fair, lawful, and equitable land use practices in all matters that come before us. At this time, may I have a roll call, please?
Ian Lowery.
President.
Jay Miller.
President.
Marshall and Sigler.
Here.
Cynthia Donald.
Here.
Chrissy Forside.
Here.
Patrick Gilbert.
Here.
Joseph Ammons.
Kenneth Kush.
Here.
Pretty Strange.
Here.
Steve Nero.
Here.
Edward Brown.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Excellent, thank you. Great attendance by everyone today, too. Thank you. So next I would like, ask for a motion for adoption of the minutes from our previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to suspend the rules and accept the minutes from October 9, 2025 meeting.
Second. All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. So now we'll begin with the items on today's agenda. Each case will be presented individually with time allotted for a public comment. For those wishing to speak, this is important, so I may have to say it again, but if you want to speak, I need to recognize you when I do come up to the podium here and give us your name and address for the record. And then, any comments or questions you direct to me and I make sure you get them answered the best as we can. All right, so we'll get started in our first part of the agenda are the subdivision cases. I'll announce each of them separately and then we'll call for opposition. The applicant or the representative may be asked to come forward to the podium and answer any questions from the commission. Our first subdivision case today is S-250062. The applicant is Russell Tomberlin. The request is a resurvey of Lot 2, Block 1 of John W. Thomason subdivision to Makala, one lot proposed. And the address is 5657 Hidden Valley Road, Makala 35111. Is there any opposition to this subdivision case?
No.
Okay, please come up. You already heard the spill, right? Name and address and thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Davis and I am an adjacent property owner on two sides. I own part of Lot 2. And, I'm sorry, my address is 5633 Hidden Valley Road and I also own 5637 Hidden Valley So my objection is simply because I'm unaware, I don't know what the new survey says. If, and I just haven't seen it, so, and it said we were going to propose boundary lines today, so I wanted to make sure that the property is not different than what was deeded to me on both sides. So that's really all I'm here for is to get a question answered is to the current, whatever has been resuraveled, does it take any part of property that I believed I owned on both sides of, of Mr. Tomberlin?
Okay, Ms. Davis, so this is the survey that was provided by the applicant that's up on the screen, so what we have. Andrew that's sitting right behind you, he can help you with it if you need navigating.
This is, this is existing property lines. We proceeded to found rebars, I believe, so it should be the same exact property. Yeah, this is a, this is a public hearing to approve a flat that has to be done. Right now, it's a part of a lot. You also have part of a lot, so we issued developer permits. It has to be entirely of a lot, it can't be a piece of a lot.
Okay.
That is the purpose of the subdivision.
Okay, so where the rebar sticks are, and I have looked at them, and it does appear that, that is what we assumed that he owned. So they're not trying to like, they haven't moved out the sticks or anything. Okay, then I'm perfectly content.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. That was a great question and great answers. Thank you, everybody. Was there anyone else in opposition or have a comment for the subdivision case? All right, hearing none, any questions from the commissioners? Okay. All right, any questions from the commissioners? All right, may I have a motion on this subdivision case?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval for case number S-250062.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. For those here for subdivision cases, after it's heard and it's been voted on, you're welcome to leave, you don't have to stay, but it sometimes can be a good show. Just watched the film from last month, so, all right, so, but anyway, it's not rude if you want to get up and take off, so. Our next subdivision case is S-250066. The applicant is Mary Overby. The request is Rodriguez, resurvey of Pawnee Village, one lot proposed. The addresses are 2236, 2240, 2250, 2268, Pawnee Village Road, Terran 35217. Okay, is there anyone in opposition to this case? Welcome, please come up and give us your name and address, ma'am.
My name is Sue Duke and I live on 28, or 2428 Pawnee Village Road. And I'm not necessarily in a deposition, I needed some clarification.
Okay.
I want to know what is proposed for this property because it's in the center of a community that is a one single family dwelling community. And we really do not hope that will ever change. Is, are the owner here so I can ask?
Well, you can ask me and I can get a question answered for you, okay?
Okay.
All right, so I can tell you basically that the purpose that I have written here, and I'll ask the applicant as well, is that it's to combine four tracts of land into one record for residential use. So, but I'll get some more details for you, okay?
Well, I know that they're already grading out to add on to the existing house that is there.
Okay.
But what purpose is it just?
I'll ask for you, okay?
I'd appreciate it.
Is there anything?
When will I know?
Is there anything else you need?
I'd like to ask out one other thing.
Okay.
And I've made this request once before, but I would appreciate greatly if there could be some way that the board, before y'all have to hear all of this, they have to come and talk to the people in the community that they're moving into and let us know what they want. It's not that we might object, we might be willing to help, but we can't if we don't know what they're planning to do because we've had some that have promised us a lot of things and they did not materialize.
It's a great.
To be what it said.
So that's a great request, and that's the A-plus answer for anybody developing something is to go talk to the neighbors before we come here.
Absolutely.
But it's kind of, I don't know, sixty, thirty on the split with only thirty percent of the people probably ever do that, so, but.
Well, what I was hoping we could do, and I don't know that this is possible, it's just a request, could y'all, when y'all are petitioned, tell them they need to go talk to the community?
Okay, well, staff is here, they've heard your request and.
I certainly would.
They will take it under consideration.
I think it would help all of us, y'all, as well as all of us.
When the neighbors have been talked to before they come in here, it works much better.
Sure.
So I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your time.
All right, was there anybody else in opposition that has something different to add? All right.
I don't have to make different statements.
Okay, all right, is the applicant present?
I work for YG and I'll be first.
Okay, would you come up and give us your name and address first, please?
My name is Eliza Weber, I work at YG Surveyors. Our office address is 173 Oxmore Road in Homewood.
Okay, Ms. Weber, thank you. So you heard Ms. Sue's question, are you familiar with what the owner is intending to do?
They, they are combining the four lots so that they can add on to their home, they can't do that, the city won't allow them to do that until they combine it to make it one legal lot.
Hang on, Ms. Sue, I got it. Okay, so they're combining into one lot and they want to add on to their home. And it sounds like from Ms. Sue's report who lives in the neighborhood that there's some excavation or grading already in progress, and I'm guessing you can't get the building permit till you take care of this.
Correct.
Okay, and land development, so is a permit required to start grading and stuff?
You're supposed to have an ESC permit.
Okay, so I might want to check on that because if they come out and find it, I think there's a daily fine, right? Potentially. Depends on, well, anyway, so.
Okay, we're just handling the survey side of it.
I understand you might want to carry that back to your.
I'll let them know.
Your customer, so.
Okay.
So I got a feeling, you know, a call might be coming to the county to go check it out.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. You picked up on that, right, Ms. Sue? Okay.
Well, it's not in the news, it's out of the paper, it's in the town, she gets the information.
Oh, I was just saying, saying, you know, the grading of the land, you can call into the staff and they can go check it out and see if they're following the regulations. And you heard, they're just adding on to their residence. Okay, all right, any questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, given, given, do we need to confirm that, that development hasn't begun, will we consider the subdivision?
Uh, no, I mean, I heard it from staff that, or well, from the applicant's representative that they cannot get a building permit until they have the plot.
Combine the tracks into.
Combine, combine the tracks into one plot, so they are not actually developing, they are possibly clearing some land which may or may not be in violation of policy, but that can be handled with a report to the staff and they can go out and look at it and take appropriate measure, but that doesn't prevent us from voting on it today. Good question. All right, any other discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval, case number S-250066.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you. Our next subdivision case is S-250067. The applicant is Jeffrey Lucas. The request is Lucas family subdivision, four lots proposed. The addresses are 9656, 9660, 9667, Bill Jones Road, Kimberly, 35091. Is there anyone here in opposition of this subdivision case? Is applicant present? All right, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation for approval, case number S-250067.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you. Our next subdivision case is S-250068. The applicant is, I hope I get this correct, Carissa Howell, request Agner's addition to Bessemer, two lots proposed. The address is 1224 Farrell Avenue, Bessemer 35020. Is there anyone here in opposition of this case? Is the applicant present?
Popular.
Okay, you're popular today.
Yeah.
So, so did I get her, the applicant's first name correct?
Yeah, you did, yeah, she's in the office.
Okay, all right, good deal. All right, so hearing no, no opposition, is there any questions from the commissioners? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval, case number S-250068.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Next subdivision case, S-250069. The applicant is Raymond Bustler, resurvey of Lot 4, Bustler, plot plan, two lots proposed. The address is 8070 Advent Cut Off Road, Trussville 35173. Is there any opposition to this subdivision case today? Is applicant present? All right, welcome applicants. Y'all aren't together, right?
Yes, but I'm a surveyor and I'm definitely in my place.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, I just was checking because there seemed to be a little, little rub right there when you said that, so.
Didn't know you were coming.
All right, well.
That's a whole separate discussion.
Yeah, well, I'm glad I got to meet today here with us, so.
I would object to him being here and I hope he doesn't object. He knows what he's doing, I'm just here to see if it's causing him.
More likely, more likely, we, you, I've come to here many times and all I do is raise my hand in my face.
Okay, all right, I will take my meeting back, thank y'all. So any comments from the commissioners? If not, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval, case number S-250069.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Our next subdivision case is S-250070. The applicant is Stephen Webb. The request is a resurvey of Lot 2, Murphy, three lot subdivision, two lots proposed. That's a lot of twos and threes, but I think I get it. So there's two lots proposed, and the address for this is 7027 Groundhog Road, Morris 35116. Is there anyone here in opposition of this subdivision case today? All right, is applicant present? All right, any questions from the commissioners? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval, case number S-250070.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you. Our next subdivision case is S-250073. The applicant is Mary Overby. The request is Francisco's addition to Vega Drive, one lot proposed. The address is 435 Southwest Vega Drive, Bessemer 35022. Is there anyone here in opposition to this subdivision case today? Is the applicant present? Wow, you're really batting a hundred today, aren't you? Okay, all right, so any questions from the commissioners? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval, case number S-250070.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. So Ms. Weber, we got one more subdivision case, but you're leaving. I was just, just checking to see if it was yours.
There might be a change.
All right, so our next subdivision case is S-250076. The applicant is Lamar Smith. The request is for Volksen Acres, three lots proposed. The address is 9157 Bagley Drive, Dora 35062. Is there anyone here in opposition to this case? Is there an applicant present? Ms. Weber, I really thought it was going to be you. Okay, hearing none, any questions from the commissioners? All right, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval, case number S-250076.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you. That concludes our subdivision cases today. We will now hear our zoning cases. Staff will present the case to the commission and we will, I will then call for opposition. The applicant or their representative may be asked to come forward to the podium to answer any questions, and both applicant and opposition total have fifteen minutes each maximum for discussion, and I'd like to reiterate again that the Planning and Zoning Commission only makes recommendations on zoning cases, the Jefferson County Commission makes the final decision. So this is the first meeting of two. We have a carryover case from 2024, Z-240056. The applicant is John Kane. The request is a change of zoning to R-7, a planned unit development for a garden home subdivision of, what's the correct number of lots?
Forty-six.
Forty-six?
Yes, sir.
For forty-six lots, it was a game time change, so it's not on my paper. And the address is 2131 Bone Drive Road in Warrior, zip code 35180.
Yes, sir, just very briefly, again, just to refresh everyone, we heard this case, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this case in January and carried it over at that time, there were some issues with the site plan, there were some concerns of opposition from the neighboring subdivision to the north from which this would be accessed from. At the time it was carried over, the applicant was trying to work out fire protection as well as providing a second access into and out, out of the development. At the time, back in January, there was a proposal for seventy-seven lots, and this was that layout that you may remember from that particular hearing. Now that's been revised and reduced, again, to forty-six lots. Again, staff is, in this, in this particular situation is recommending approval with conditions. One is that sprinkler systems be required for each residence, and that two, the area of the property surrounding the special flood hazard area on the property as shown here on the existing land use map. And you'll notice that the other side of the creek is not, or the other side of the creek right here is not disturbed either, and you'll see there are some steep slopes that are right there around that creek as well. And so by the end of the result, the PR-7, the current PR-7, it's a conservation, it's a conservation development district. And in this instance, it meets that criteria because what it's doing is it's taking that flood plain as well as those steep slopes out of the equation for any sort of development at all. And it is clustering the housing. You will see too, and if you notice just the faint image of the, of the subdivision to the north, this, this particular lot pattern, even though they are, it is more compact and the lot width is, is smaller, it is more in line with that development to the north than the previous proposal was. Again, in this instance, because it does comply with the policies of the, of the county comprehensive plan, the Forward Together Plan, staff is recommending approval to rezoning to PR-7, and again, that's a caveat there because the R-7 that was originally requested is now non-existent following the adoption of the new zoning regulations back in October, so it needs to be rezoned again to PR-7 with the condition that the sprinkler systems be required for each residence. Again, that's to mitigate the fact that this area is an uncovered area within the county and also the, the need for a second access into the property. Also, the, an additional condition is that the area of the property around the special flood area, the flood, special flood hazard area be dedicated as a conservation easement at the time of subdivision, and access to the conservation easement shall be provided as to allow for recreational use for the residents of the development. Again, that's in keeping with the spirit and intent of the PR-7 regulations. And I will also state that this was a conversation in the pre-meeting regarding the second access, that that second access could also be worked into that access for the conservation easement as well. So we could kill two birds with one stone with that particular provision and condition. Of course, that would be up to the approval of the county engineering department in order to be sure that that road or that access will suffice for emergency access purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. So is the applicant present? All right, I should have known that already, I'm sorry. Is there any opposition to this rezoning case? Okay, are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, well.
There are numerous letters of opposition. I'm kind of stunned that nobody's here.
Well, those were from last year, so, so perhaps that was the reason, I don't know.
Okay, that makes sense.
So were there any questions?
Yes, just to clarify, I do want to say, we did send out public notice for this and we haven't received any communications from anyone in the public to date regarding the agenda being, or the item being on the agenda for this here.
Okay, thank you, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to just state for the record that the staff's identified a way to comply with our Forward Together Comprehensive Development Plan and all the applicable offices, and to ensure the safety of the residents of this, of this development. And that, that plan is to, is to effectively allow a separate ingress route through that proposed conservation area. That is, I think that is very relevant, I think that's very, very, very smart potential to do it, I'll just for the record.
All right, thank you for your statement. Does applicant have anything he'd like to say before we, all right, so closing the public hearing and I'd like a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, with all the recommendations, approval of rezoning to PR-7, I'd like to say that all sprinkler systems, sprinkler systems shall be required for each resident. The area of the property, including the special flood hazard area, shall be dedicated as a conservation easement at the time of the subdivision. Access to the conservation easement shall be provided as to allow recreational use for the residents of the development. Those recommendations, recommend, are, make a motion, we approve Z-24-0056.
Second.
All right, I have, all right, so I got a simultaneous hand raise and a second, so I'm going to pause for a discussion with Mr. Kush and then I'll let you reintroduce your second. Go ahead, Mr. Kush.
The second sentence, can we add, access to the conservation shall be provided as allow recreational and emergency use for the residents of the.
Mr. Miller, did you hear, Mr.?
Emergency access.
Well, hang on, we've got to get concurrence from the motioner. So, Mr. Miller, did you hear, Mr. Kush? All right, so he would like to amend condition two for recreational use and emergency use?
Yes, so the access can have a dual function, Michael, whether it be that it provides access to the conservation easement and also provide a secondary emergency access to the residents.
Okay, Mr. Kush, that concludes your comment?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Miller, would you like to amend your motion?
I'd like to amend the motion to Z-24-0056, that the access to the conservation easement be a dual function, has to provide a secondary easement, a secondary entrance and exit, and also allow for emergency vehicles to pass through.
Was that correct, Mr. Kush?
That was correct.
All right, so I now have an amended motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, who went first, I couldn't tell. I think it was here, but it was a close tie. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank y'all. See, I told you it was a show if you stay around. So now we have a new rezoning case, and, sorry, I am out of order.
We should be on 25006, was it 250026?
Yes. Okay, all right, so I'm here now, okay, so the, our next rezoning case is Z-250026. The applicant is Wes Vertoldi. It's a request to remove split zoning and align the zoning with the proposed subdivision for an existing residential use and an existing nightclub resulting in Lot 1 being zoned A1 Agriculture and Lot 2 being zoned C3 Commercial. Let's see, the address is 7379 and 7377, 78 West Dora, 3500. Let's see, the address is 7379 and 7377, 78 West Dora, 35062.
Yes, sir, all right, good afternoon commissioners. So, again, this is Z-250026. The future land, the subject site is located along Highway 78 at the intersection of Warrior-Jasper Road. Future land use map that we recently adopted designated that intersection as commercial corridor, and then the existing zoning in the area right now is C3 commercial and A1. And the applicant's requesting, as you stated, to remove split zoning and rezonate to C5 for a strip club. So the corridor was, just so we can kind of walk through our thought process on here, the corridor was designated, all the areas you see in Rev. was designated as commercial corridor. The reason for that is, we recognize that there was a gap in essential lifeline services for that part of the county, as well as some what we consider, you know, retail and service leakage going into Summerton and Walker County. And really, this gentleman's site, as well as some other ones, are one of the few flat developable sites along Highway 78, once you start getting to that Walker County line. To put it in perspective, this site is about five minutes from Bevill State Community College in Summerton, and about five minutes travel time to Corner High School. So just to recap, again, commercial corridor place type, the intent of it is to really be a retail restaurant, service usage, commercial usage, that leverages a major arterial or collector road, has good adequate road frontage, and has kind of a market shed that extends beyond just the local area, based off the traffic counts and the meeting patterns in the area. So as part of our analysis, we looked at the gap in those lifeline services, and that kind of helped us come up with the recommendations for this case, but also for our initial recommendation in terms of why we picked this area for a commercial corridor. So you'll see, we got the pointer right here. See, the lighter blue line that kind of goes around here and meanders through Walker and Jefferson County, that has a 10-minute travel shed, so basically it's a 10-minute drive time from the subject site. The thick line, thick blue line is the county line, and then these various icons you see are for healthcare, grocery store, and pharmacies. So as you can see, there's definitely a gap in this area for those lifeline services. A lot of those pharmacies, grocery stores, and healthcare facilities are located in the Summerton area on the Walker County side. So our intent with designating that area, again, was to try and mitigate that gap in service that we were providing in the area. One of the goals of the comprehensive plan, as a reminder, was to mitigate or eliminate, you know, blight. That takes the form of urban blight, signs of blight, causes of blight, rural blight, really the entire list, because those things kind of compound on each other. And to go back to this real quick, so just north of his, of this site, about a year ago, we, we ran into some case history for a zoning violation for a illegal gaming facility. And that's also another indicator of blight that we're trying to mitigate with the comprehensive plan. So really, the intent with this corridor and what the comprehensive plan plans to do is to try and turn this segment, as well as all Highway 78 around, and get, get development that provides employment and essential services to people in Jefferson County and beyond. So one of the cases, well, I looked at as part of our recommendation for this, was the City of Renton versus Playtime Theaters, and this was a Supreme Court case that was heard in 1986. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but the general finding was that adult entertainment, to include strip clubs, peep shows, that whole, that whole gambit, basically everything that we have outlined in C5, the zoning category, is protected among, on the First Amendment for freedom of speech and freedom of expression. What the court did find was that a city or county can regulate or mitigate the negative impacts of that, secondary impacts and indirect impacts, by regulating the time, place, and manner that these developments go into. So as part of that, we looked at, okay, where does this development, is it commensurate or does it correlate with blight? And some of the findings of that was a study that was done by the Journal of Community, Community of Psych, Journal of Community Psychology, sorry, I'm tripping over my words, is that there, in that there is a higher per capita, I'm sorry, higher per capita incidence of violent crime associated with strip clubs nearby. The second finding, and this is from Realtor.com, is that there's a roughly 15% decrease in residential property values for areas that have strip clubs within their zip code versus those that aren't. So going back to existing land uses, Mr. Brown prepared on this slide, you know, the proposed site is very developable, it's fairly flat, you know, it does have good road frontage. And we feel like the highest and best use for that site would be something that provides an essential service and/or employment to the area, to that community in the area. Here's the survey that was passed at the last P&amp;Z committee for this site, and here's the aerial, so the gentleman that owns the property, he's got a residence in the back, he has a storage to the west of it, and there's some single family around it. And then this is a rendering that Mr. Brown prepared in the top left corner, as well as a recent picture of the site in the bottom right. In terms of traffic impacts here, really not, fairly negligible, based off the square footage, you know, I believe Willie ran it as a dancing, or I'm sorry, a drinking facility, looking at about 27 trips per day. And to summarize all these bullet points that we talked about earlier, the gist of it is that we recommend denial on this, and the reason for that is that it's inconsistent with the land use map, as well as the goals of the comprehensive plan to reduce blight. Going back to that earlier point, in terms of it being inconsistent with the land use map, again, we, we want higher employment, higher services in our commercial corridor designations. And the issue I see with this is if we pass C5 here for commercial corridor, we're going to run into other instances where we have C5 property, and we'll be, we're risking setting a precedent for that. Our zoning ordinance that we also passed commensurate with the comprehensive plan designates that adult entertainment establishments go in rural areas. And while this area is not as developed it is outside the town of Summerton, which is a, I would consider it a rural town, and we are trying to see that entire corridor not necessarily develop in terms of a high-intensity development, but redevelop the vacant properties in there into more commercial properties that have more utility for the people in the county. Any questions for me, sir?
No, thank you.
I believe the applicant's probably here.
So is our applicant present? Okay, all right. Well, hang on just a sec, so is there any opposition today? Josh, I can't see around you. That's okay. Any opposition today? All right, the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? If you do, I'll bring them up.
Yes.
So would you come up to the podium, name and address, please, first? And if you're both going to speak, we need both of your names and addresses.
I'm actually the attorney for the applicant. My name's Brandon Prince, address is 1216 Ivy Brook Circle, Homewood, Alabama, 35209.
Thank you, Mr. Prince.
And would you all like me to just, could I speak briefly before you ask questions?
You may.
So just, I wanted to point a few things out. I know some issues were brought up with the potential future uses of the property, so I wanted to address two things. The first thing is that this is not a new adult entertainment establishment, it's been there for well over a decade. I think some of the things that were pointed out about increased crime, lower property values, would be applicable in a situation where you had a new establishment coming in, but this establishment has already been there, and so we don't have to speculate about future issues that may occur. We already know what has been occurring there, and no issues were raised by the staff. The second thing I wanted to point out, and I guess proper to the commission, was that we would also be willing to have, you know, restrictions on the C5. This is just to conform the property to its existing use, and I think some of the issues that were brought up could be mitigated by restricting the C5 usage to historical use. So essentially, nothing else in C5 can be done there, just what was historically done there based on business licenses, which have not lapsed and have been in place the entire time. I think, you know, we spoke with staff right before the meeting, and they said that it was operating under non-conforming use, but that is currently outside of that. And I looked at the zoning ordinance about discontinuing use, and it doesn't really define discontinuing. Again, I want to point out that the business has maintained a business license, it's never lapsed, it's currently active now. So I just wanted to address those few things, because if the concerns are setting a precedent and expanding the uses to other C5 issues, I think that can be done, that can be addressed by putting restrictions on it, which we're wholly fine with. Again, we're just wanting to conform the use to what it has historically been, which has been an adult entertainment establishment for well over a decade. And again, the other issues that were brought up, there was nothing specific to this location, just what generally happens in situations like this. But I think since we're dealing with an existing business, it would have been, I think, more compelling to actually bring up issues that existed with this business versus speculative issues that exist with these types of businesses.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prince. I have a question for staff, so I hear conflicting information that the business license is still active versus, earlier I thought we discussed it was not active.
The business, they can have, the license doesn't mean that it was operating, it hasn't been operating since September of last year.
Okay, so that was the statement that we heard today. So what's the difference between operating and a business license? Having a license and not being open?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And just to, just to point out, I don't mean to interrupt, but the ordinance doesn't define operating. So I think, you know, if we're going based on that, if you're holding yourself out as a business, if you are maintaining a business license, you know, I can think of a scenario, for example, say the business is hit by a storm and has to close for a number of months in order to do renovations, but they maintain their business license, I don't think in that context it would be wise to restrict operations to what's going on within the business. I think if there is an intent shown to maintain business operations, which a business license certainly is, then I don't think that we can create definitions where they don't currently exist, and there is no definition.
I appreciate you explaining, I really just needed a clarification between operation and business license, which I have, so I do understand the difference. First, I thought the same thing was discussed, I see that it's not now. I think Commissioner Miller has some questions.
Correct, Mr. Ron, was it the property sold?
It was partially sold, so the property itself was sold, the business itself, the prior owners are still actually involved in the business itself, and they, and they're actually the ones that are still maintaining the license. But the property itself, yes, it was sold.
So Wesley's Booby Trap is still Wesley's Booby Trap, almost appels?
Yeah, it's, the business license is still under their name.
Yeah, but it has, has that property sold to the owner?
So the property has been sold, if you're looking at it as two separate things, so you got the property and you got the business. The property has been sold, the business is still in their name.
So it hasn't been transferred to anybody else's name?
No, the business is not. And I think they intend to bring on some partners, just so I can be forthcoming, but they're going to continue to be involved in the operations of the business.
Will they be the owners of it, or just the overall operation?
They'll be the owners, I mean, they're going to maintain ownership interest in the business.
And Josh, if you don't mind, so just to reaffirm, so the request today is to change the zoning for the two lots, correct? For, to, one being A1 and two being C3?
That should be C5.
C5, okay.
We're changing both of those to C5?
No. You're aligning, you're aligning the zoning with recently separated, one lot will remain A1, the other lot in its entirety will be zoned C4, which is requested to be zoned C5. Currently, there's a portion of that lot that has C3 zoned on it, we're not real clear about what the legal description of that area that's zoned C3 is. And at the time when the use commenced on the property, no businesses were clearly defined or anything else, and so they lumped them into the C3 category. Well, now that the ordinance has changed, they need to be zoned something for compliance. If they were to come with full building permits or something for the facility, we'd still have to go through this process.
Just to be clear, the C5 is staying C5, the A1 is staying A1?
A1, A1 will remain A1. And then the other, the other lot would be C5. Currently, it's zoned, it has A1 and C3 zoned on it, so it's C3, there's only that. Maybe this would better take the story. There we go. All right, so you see how this property is currently?
Right.
That portion is zoned C3 already, which currently just allows for like lounges, pool halls, that kind of, all right? Now, if you look at the aerial photograph on it, you'll see what's zoned C3 doesn't necessarily follow the pattern of what's developed with regards to the business, with regards to the business structure itself, the parking and everything else. By aligning the zoning with the lot line, all that will be clarified. That's why we have a lot of these alignment cases, allowing, because it's a compliance issue. But again, the planning commissioner is certainly up the, to recommend approval of rezoning Lot 1 to A1, Lot 2 to any other classification, and that recommendation will go to the county commission. So you could recommend rezoning, say, like, at C1, which would be compliant with the current management, it could allow this specific use, but it would be compliant with the latest. You can rezon the whole thing to C3, just to bring it all under that one classification. But again, in order to achieve compliance with the operation that was there, or what the new operation would be, you would have to rezonate to C5.
So I have a conforming question. So the way it exists right now is for the Wesley's Booby Trap is, it's in a C3 zoning district, which at the time was conforming.
Correct.
And now it is non-conforming.
Correct.
But has, if we change it, so if they do anything to the property, but as is, the property's still conforming?
No, it's not, it's not.
Could you elaborate on that for me?
Yes, because it's been out used for more than one year. And so it loses its non-conforming status at that point.
Where is that documented?
That is in Section 1602.
Of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
In the event that a structural or premises occupied by a non-conforming use becomes and remains discontinued for a period of one year, the use shall become thereafter reformed to the use regulations of the district in which the structure or premises is located.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Prince, do you have anything to say to that discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm not Your Honor, I'm so, I'm so used to it. I do, so, again, the ordinance does not define discontinue, I think that's preeminent here, because, again, we're reading into, we're reading in a definition in there that is not there. Again, they've maintained a business license, they've held themselves out to continue to be that business. And again, you can just say, okay, well, they're, they're not in use if they don't get any customers. Again, there, that becomes so subjective, that I think that you can read into it and create your own definition as to what use is, so I think it's more important to focus on the hard documentation we have, that if somebody takes the time to go and secure a business license and renew the business license, then there's certainly an intent there to continue business operations. And I don't, and because the ordinance does not define use, then I think that we should rely on their actions, which are, we went and got a business license, we went and renewed the business license. It would be completely different if the ordinance defined use, but it doesn't. And so I think that's important here, because what we're doing is, again, creating a definition versus looking at the actions of the party, which are holding themselves out to be in operation, securing a business license, maintaining that business license. These are all things that the county requires in order to operate as a business, so if you are operating, you have to do these things.
Okay. Thank you for your remarks. Michael, you had a statement or a question?
Just, just to that point, when they issue business licenses downstairs, they do not verify, ask for, require any sort of zoning documentation. That's how we ended up with things like being a law that are not written anywhere.
Yes, okay, I understand, okay.
May I speak, just speak to that, two sentences. It was not a new business license, it was a renewal. So I think that is an important distinction, because, again, they're not going to look at zoning in any respect in that situation, because they have an existing license that they're just renewing.
I agree, they don't look at it whether it's a renewal.
They don't renew, they don't look at it when they first issue it.
Right. And I agree with that, I've seen it before, so.
Not irrespective.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, we have a difference of opinion on use, so I understand that.
Mr. Chairman, I've got another question.
Sure, Chairman, go ahead.
So our packet says, the request to rezonate the subject property from C3 and A1 to C5. The way I see this is that that property is, based on that map, is mostly A1, and we're not rezoning the A1 to C5, is that correct?
That's correct. Well, because of the way that, okay? Just to demonstrate, this portion right now is zoned C3, the remainder of it around it is A1. So by rezoning this entire lot to some classification, they rent the entire lot to the classification, there's no questions of setback lines, there's no question of these parking into A1, all that's taken care of.
So we're effectively, we split the lot, we put the land into two lots last month.
Correct. We're aligning zoning with those lots.
Lot 2 will be C5, Lot 1 will stay A1.
As the request. Yes.
I'll take care of your questions.
That's, that's great.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions? Any other commissioners have questions?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I do. The, this is with, this is with regard to the future use of, of our, is, is the future use intended to be same as the past?
It, it is, and again, that's why I offer the restriction because, again, all of the issues in terms of conforming with the plan, I think can be addressed with just simply placing a restriction on it. Whatever was used prior, if you got a business license for it, for example, it's an adult entertainment establishment, then going forward, if it's in C5 for this particular piece of property, it would be restricted to that business. It can't be anything else that would be incorporated in C5. And I think that was, that restriction would address the concerns with it not conforming with the plan while also allowing the business to continue to operate. Because, again, it's not going to be like, can't put a dump there or whatever else is allowed in C5 would not be permitted under that restriction. Again, it's not going to change the impact because the business has been there over a decade. So we're not talking about increased usage, we're not talking about expanding the use, we're not talking about a higher impact on the property or the surrounding community because that impact is already existing. And what that restriction would do would be allow it to simply conform with the zoning while restricting any other use within the C5 category, which I think would accomplish abating the concerns that they have with that particular issue.
Can I see the aerial photograph one more time? So with regard to the Amy Jones' right, it's not, it's not, it's not super clear. But and given the, the license, there is a license for it. And the idea is that license is for business that will generate revenue and perform the function that that business will perform. In addition, as a resident, these pieces of property has, has to comply with our current, our, all of our, our, our zoning, we can live in all these types of policies. As I look at it, the impact from the aerial view does not seem to, doesn't seem to be optimal.
And I'm, I'm not sure when, when that picture was taken. I know, I know that the new property owners have taken extensive measures to clean up the property. They putting up fences. Again, whatever, whatever you all want them to do, they will do. They're very compliant, they're, they're willing to take those necessary steps.
And just to comment on that one, when we received the subdivision plaque in the, in the office, we went out there and initiated the complaint process for them to clean it before we even signed the plaque to provide the property.
Okay.
So yes, but our zoning inspectors have verified that there's been heavy expensive.
They don't have any existing violations, correct?
I don't believe so.
No existing, excellent, that's right. And then, how, the last question I had was how would it, you know, given, you know, soon we consider this, how is it going, how does that comply with the, the, the report?
Yep.
Oh, I mean, I, obviously it's not going to comply with the plan, but again, I think that would be the purpose of the restriction would be to not expand it beyond the existing use. So I think what that does is it mitigates the issues that they have with not, not conforming with the plan because it's currently a non-conforming business, which, again, we, we still argue would fall within that category since they've maintained their business license. But obviously, we want to, we want to be on board with you all. We want to make sure that the zoning is correct, and so that's the reason that we're here.
Mr. Chairman, we have one minute left.
Okay. Well, we're going to have to go longer than a minute because I got a question too, so. But I, well, give us five more minutes, okay? Go, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
My, my question is for Mr. Paulie. The, I, the, I see on that map, there's a building that's looking over, an older outdoor car, jet. Is that part of the, would that be part of the A1 or is that part of the C5? Where does it fall on the, I don't see that on your, on your most recent. It's probably on the front, up next to the road.
West Portholi, 399 Gregory Road, Jasper, Alabama.
Thank you.
Andrew, you have a question?
I'm the surveyor, and.
Right there, stop.
Okay. The survey has, has the most recent structures on it.
That building's gone?
Yeah.
Patrick, that covered?
Those are the most recent structures, and the shed, west hand side shed over there?
Yes, sir.
Has, has been, has been removed.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, all right. Michael, I have a question for you. So with our current land use plan and comprehensive plan, what zoning categories are allowed?
I would think C1. Yeah, C1.
That's it?
We live in the C1, the way that it's specifically.
So C, C3 would not be allowed and C5, correct?
C5, it definitely, the, the plan speaks specifically to adult oriented business being in rural areas, that it's being isolated. C3, that's, that's lounge zoning. I don't, I mean, the goal of the plan is to bring forth assistance and employment. I mean, you could make that argument.
Okay, so definitely C1, maybe C2, I mean, C3, not C5. Okay, so, Mr. Prince, so I've heard everything, and this is more of a discussion right now. So I understand your current zoning for the business that has a license is C3. And given the current zoning ordinance, the use would not conform to C3. It would conform to C5. C5 is not allowed in this area according to the land use plan and the comprehensive plan, okay? And so the dilemma here is you could keep your C3, and then you'd have an issue with the county on whether or not you're conforming, okay? Likely, we aren't able to approve C5 because it doesn't, it's not allowed in our land use plan. So the dilemma there is as we proceed to vote, that most likely we will deny it based on it not conforming with the land use plan and the comprehensive plan for, for C5.
May I speak to that in particular?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, let me finish. So, so you could withdraw and attempt to operate under C3 as you have been doing and not, or we could rezone the whole parcel C3, but then, again, you couldn't operate the business once you rezone it to C3. Did I get that right, Michael?
That's correct. It would have to be, again, C3 would allow for like a lounge, pool hall, things like that. It would not allow for.
So if you do rezone it and rezone it all to C3, because you're establishing a new zoning for the parcel, it won't conform. Okay, if you stay where you're at, there's a question, probably a legal question of whether or not it conforms, okay? So that's not doing anything. And C5, you can ask for it, and we're probably not going to recommend it based on our, our regulations.
Okay.
So, so I'd like to hear what you have to say, and I would like your thoughts on how you would like to proceed.
So, again, the rezoning was just to try to comply with conformity. If you all aren't going to rezone it, withdrawal will probably.
Well, we're not, again, we don't, we don't make the decision. We make a recommendation, the county commission makes.
We'll probably withdraw only because, again, we still maintain that the business is not discontinued. So, again, if we, if we got to go to court for that, we will, but I don't, I don't think it was necessary. I mean, they have a business license, and they've complied with all rules and regulations under the county as far as obtaining their license and maintaining it. So, again, if there is not going to be an appetite for rezoning, which I completely understand you all's position, then we'll probably withdraw. I do want to point out, though, that I think that, again, rezoning with the restriction would be, in essence, keeping it in, within the plan because, again, it would only maintain the current business that's there and would not allow any expansive use within the C5 zoning category.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, it's not recommended, we don't make a practice of conditional zoning for a use. So like, if it was C3, we couldn't say you can only have a dry cleaners there. It has to be, you can put anything that's allowed under the ordinance in that zone.
I understand.
So, believe me, I actually like that practice, but I've been discouraged many times. You're welcome to withdraw. You can carry it over if you want to rework it some. I'm not sure where there's a avenue.
Could we carry it over and then I could speak with my clients? And then if they want to withdraw, is that something we can do prior to any meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to.
But the third thing I was going to offer is you could go ahead and let us vote. Even if we deny, it still goes to the county commission, so you could take your chances there.
Well, I think carrying over that way, because I, you know, it's not my property, so I want to speak to them. So I think carrying over would probably be best that way. If they don't want to proceed and they want to withdraw, we can just do that prior to any future meetings.
Okay, all right, so are you making a request to carry it over to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, does that give you ample time to prepare?
It does.
Okay, all right, so I haven't carried over one in so long. Do we need a motion or we just have a, is it carried over by the request? I'll just make a motion. I mean, so can I have a motion to, the applicant has requested to carry over the case so he can confer with his client. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the client, the applicant's position to withdraw or reschedule on Z25-0027.
Carryover.
Carryover, yes.
All right, I have a motion to carry over.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes to carry over to next one.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Okay, so that was our last rezoning case, but we have a few more other cases today. Our first one is a land use plan amendment. And I believe Mr. Brown is going to present that for us. Do I need to, let me call the details.
Sure.
Okay, so the case number is LUAT20250006. The applicant is Jeremy Weston. The request is a minor land use map amendment to the agricultural and rural designation. The area is, or the address is 1955 Alliance Road, Hueytown, Alabama 35023.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the intent of the land use amendment is to accommodate the proposed rezoning request. And this land use amendment is associated with the rezoning case Z-25-27. Some of the existing conditions of, of this particular land use amendment is within the area, the large lot residential and agricultural uses are within proximity of this site, small scale farming and rural homesteads. Alliance Road is a major collector found mostly within a rural setting. Public water is available to this site and surrounding area. The site relies on, relies on, excuse me, individual septic systems for waste water treatment. This area retains a low density rural development pattern consistent with the proposed agricultural rural place type. I should back up and mention that this is a staff initiated land use amendment so that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the county's long range future land use map. So the amendment would be from estate residential to agricultural rural. And the purpose behind that is manufactured slash mobile homes are not permitted within the estate residential designation, but they are permitted within the agricultural rural designation. And just to very quickly go through these, the county's maps, the future land use map, again, it identifies this site and the surrounding area as estate residential. Across the street, however, directly is land that is designated agricultural rural. To the right is the county's zoning map. It shows you the properties presently zoned I3 industrial. Some of the characteristics of this site, as shown on the existing land use map, is that the property falls within the Black Warrior watershed. The site is, does not fall within a FEMA designated floodplain area. Contours range from 410 feet to 430 feet. Their soils found on the site, according to USGS topo map, perhaps this is more information than you want. It's Navu fine sandy loam, which is versatile and stable for both residential and commercial development. To the right is the county's aerial map. That area shown in a deep green is mostly vacant undeveloped land. Again, the property directly across the street is properties that are low density residential or single family residential. The floodplain, which is not necessarily proximity to the subject site, but it is within the vicinity of the site, is you have the Locust Fort, Locust Fort Tributary, which feeds into the Black Warrior watershed. So, Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending approval of this land use amendment from estate residential to agricultural rural to support rezoning case Z25-27. And if you'd like, I can go directly into the rezoning case.
Let's call this one.
Yes, sir, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. So is there any opposition here today for this land use plan amendment? Any questions from the commissioners? All right, hearing none, could I have a motion on land use plan amendment LUAT2025006?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve LUAT-2025-006.
Second. All right, have a motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, now that that's approved, we will proceed with the zoning case that's related to that. That's case number Z250027. Applicant also happens to be Jeremy Weston. The request is for a change in zoning to A1 agricultural for a 30-foot by 76-foot mobile home. The address, again, is 1955 Alliance Road, Hueytown, 35023.
Yes, sir, and because I've already gone through the, the details of the land use amendment as well as the rezoning request from I3 industrial to A1, I'll just simply say that staff is recommending approval of the rezoning as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition to this rezoning case? Is the applicant present? All right, welcome. Let's see if we have any questions. The commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right, you're good? All right, no, I mean, I mean, you don't need to come up, that's all I mean. So, all right, so, so we don't have any questions for you. So hearing no opposition and no questions, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, may I say something on the record?
You may, so I'll pause on the motion, come up and give your name and address and.
My name is Jeremy Weston, it's 1955 Alliance Road's property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weston.
I just want to say, as a whole, with society, we're quick on pointing out negative things. I go to work every day, I have no idea how to navigate this. But Ms. Connie has helped me so much, so I want to go on record and just say that she's been a true public servant, and I couldn't have, I wouldn't have navigated this without her.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Weston, and thank you so much, Connie, too. Okay, now that we've got that taken care of, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the compatibility with the comprehensive plan or land use plan, I recommend approval for Z25-0027.
Second, second. All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you. So now we have a special use permit request. The case number is 250014M, like in Mike, special use. The applicant is Stacy Alexander. It's a special use permit request to allow a mobile home for family use only in addition to a stick built residence on one parcel of land. This is currently zoned A1 agriculture, and the address is 7290 Brassville Loop, Quentin, 35130.
Yes, sir. A special use is required for multiple dwellings to be permitted for personal or family use on each lot of record. Each lot, currently on this parcel is a stick built house and three accessory structures, a barn and two carports slash sheds. The applicant's proposing the addition of a 16 by 76 mobile home to be owner occupied. Currently, the stick house that they're currently living in, the plan is to demolish that stick house until later moving to the mobile home. The parcel is approximately 4.7 acres. The proposed addition of the mobile home for family use is consistent with the current zoning regulations, which require cumulative, cumulative lot size, minimum lot size of 30 square feet for the one mobile home and one single family dwelling. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Connie. All right, is there any opposition to this special use permit request? Any questions from the commissioners? The applicant present? Okay, thank you, we don't, I don't have any questions, so I just want to make sure you're recognized, okay? All right, so having no opposition and no questions, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve 250014M, special use.
Second. All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you. I have another special use permit, and the case number is 2500. I have another special use permit, and the case number is 250015M, special use. And this applicant is Austin Simmons. It's a special use permit request to allow two mobile homes for family use only in addition to an existing mobile home on one parcel of land, currently zoned A1 agricultural. The address is 9243 Manning Road, Dora, 35062.
Uh, yes, sir. For the applicant, all three mobile homes will be used for family use. Uh, one is, I think the grandmother owns the land, one's for the son, one granddaughter, and the other mobile home would be occupied by the grandson. Currently on the tract of land is the existing mobile home in a two-car garage, an abandoned garage, that will be removed at a later date. The applicant's proposing the two, uh, mobile homes, as I said earlier, to be occupied by family use. The lot size is approximately 41.56 acres. The proposed addition of the two mobile homes and the one existing, uh, mobile home is consistent with the reg, zoning regulations that requires a minimum of two acres. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you, Connie. Is there any opposition to this special use permit? All right, hearing none, any questions from the commissioners? Okay, would the applicant come up and, uh, give us your name and address at the podium? And Commissioner Miller has a question for you.
Austin Simmons, I live at 9243 Manning Road, Dora, Alabama 35062.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure you understand, it's family use, personal use only.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I just want to make sure you all understand.
Yeah, they're all back there, absolutely.
You're my neighbor, I'll be watching you.
Yes, sir. I work for us, absolutely.
Great, isn't it?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, any other questions from the commissioners? All right, hearing no opposition and no further questions, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on section 801-03A, governors in each lot and tract, multiple dwellings can be permitted for personal or family use only by special use permit, am I correct, permission would prove it?
Second. All right, have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.